Use, sorry, that the proposed location of the conditional use is in accord with the objectives of this ordinance and the purpose of the zone in which the site is located. And staff notes that commercial campgrounds are allowed through the approval of a conditional use permit in the general zone, so that's enough. Two, that the proposed location of the conditional use and conditions under which it would be operated or maintained will not be detrimental to the public safety, health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in vicinity. And so staff's response is that the proposed use has a density of units that's under what's allowed in section 3218, so that helps to reduce any sort of impact. The campground is buffered by a decent amount of space and the existing tall vegetation. The applicant submitted a compatibility plan that also mitigates noise impact and time dates sort of impacts. The applicant's fire was an emergency plan, and staff's condition number three to kind of see some of those out with the road improvements, ensure continued public health, safety, and welfare for the public, and conditions of, and even the way that the applicant cited all of the units, and trying to keep all of that tall vegetation helps to buffer and minimize impact as well. The third finding that needs to be made is that the proposed conditional use will comply with each of the applicable provisions of this ordinance except for approved variances. So, staff, we went through all the different requirements and that sort of chart. The one waiver that is sort of asked, and staff feels is, there's merit for the waiver, and staff supports that the waiver should be granted, is for the location on a kind of maintained road. Instead, they sort of have a maintenance plan involved with it. For condition number four, that the proposed conditional use is consistent within conformance of the goals, objectives, and policies of the general plan or specific plan. On the previous slide, I kind of went through the ways in which it meets the plan, and I have to say in the staff report, on page eight, under this condition, there, it does note that maybe there were things that I hadn't gotten. Those were things that I forgot to change out when I got some of these items from the applicants near the latter part of the staff report week, so I apologize for that, but everything was submitted. So I just wanted to clarify that. And with that, staff is recommending approval of CUP 20024, subject to the 12 conditions of the staff report, and I'm happy to take any questions from the commissioner this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Do commissioners have any questions for Mr. Schwartz?
Yes, I've got one.
Okay.
I would like Mr. Schwartz to know that this will not be an inquisition like it was with the DRO. I'd just like to know if they have electrical power to the property.
Right, Madam Chair, Commissioner Walters, so they don't currently, and they are actually bringing power out there, and it's going to connect some of the neighboring properties, so I think that's also why they're a pretty good favor to their neighbors.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay, any, Commissioner Walters?
Yes, my question is, it states here that there's an adequate wastewater system, preferably pit latrines. Install an environmentally friendly wastewater system focused on water conservation, building composting toilets, and a gray water system irrigate the site landscaping. Please explain to me how you're going to have that kind of usage there and have pit butt trims.
Right, so Commissioner Walters, everything, there's a condition here that they just have to meet the requirements of the environmental quality division. To be honest with you, I'm not sure pit privies are technically allowed under the environmental qualities ordinances, but we're going to kind of get to that, and they might have to be required to just do the norm, normal subject type system instead of that.
So, I, this is Jess, I can jump in on that one as well. So, talking with David Monahan, there, there is a way, you know, we're delegated to ADQ's regulations, and it is possible, in theory, again, like many things, to do a outhouse pit toilet type toilet at a campground, but it has to be permitted. So, it would have to meet all ADQ requirements and would be permitted through our, through our wastewater division. So, just like any, any property that requires water or wastewater systems, they have to be permitted through our environmental quality division. They aren't going to get a permit, they're going to be able to function without, without those permits.
Thank you for that. On recommended conditions of approval, number two, it says tents and community permanent structures shall be earth toned or green in color in order to blend in with the surrounding environment, subject to approval by any development director. I understand here you're going to have a couple of airstream trailers in, in this community. How's that going to be blending?
Right, so Commissioner Walters, that's a really good point of clarification. Obviously, they're not going to want to paint these things any color, and it's kind of has nostalgic type of look in itself that people like, so I think it might be a good idea to remove, I don't think it specifically says in this condition that the RVs have to be painted, just tents and the permanent structures. So technically, the RV is not a permanent structure, so it might be okay as is actually, and they're not going to have to paint the RVs.
Pretty hard to camouflage them. Thank you for your answer, though.
Okay, Commissioner Best?
I was just going to say that it looks to me like the juniper there, as long as those things are well back from the property line, I don't think you're going to see, there's quite a bit of coverage there.
That's a good point.
Okay, I don't see anyone else looking to ask a question, Mr. Schwartz. Is, thank you, Schwartz, great job managing the campgrounds.
Thank you.
Is the applicant or the applicant's representative available to speak to the commission?
Yes, this is Tom Staub.
Okay, Mr. Staub, would you please state your address for the record, and then go ahead and address the commission?
Sure, so home address is 1102 Echo Lane, Austin, Texas.
Okay, and what would you like to tell us? Let's start with this question. Have you read the staff report, and do you agree with the conditions?
Yes, thoroughly.
Okay. Do you have anything else that you would like to add?
Yeah, so I think it's, I do want to say a few things, right? And my business partner is also on the line, Eric Rubenstein, so if he wants to add color, you know, at your approval, I would say that he should too, but I think when you look at the environment that is coming to the area, right, there's, there's a lot of these companies that are coming to you all. And one of the things that we're focusing on in our mission, in our core value, at the essence, is really taking the environment that, that we have on the land, which we think is an asset versus those of the under canvases of the world, and intertwining that with the entire, the entire experience. So, for example, so one thing that we're doing with the excavation throughout the property is we're, we're going to be keeping as many trees and stones and pathways that are currently there intact as much as we can, and that's going to be one of our competitive advantages as it compares to the under, under canvases. And so, I totally respect the idea of the airstream, that, you know, the shiny silver reflecting across the street, but those, those juniper pines will, will be in place, and I do believe those will get in the way of that reflection. And then the tents will be earth toned, and again, we are doing all that we can to intertwine the, the beauty of the land with our setup as it is.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Staub? All righty, seeing none, I'm going to, is there anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case tonight?
This is Michael McCauley with the Perrin Ranch.
Okay, hi, Mike. Okay, go ahead, please.
Address is 3445 North Schaefer Lane, Flagstaff.
Okay, okay, what, what do you want to tell us?
Well, what I'd like, I'm the property owner on the west side of the fence. We, I've met with Eric a number of times and discussed some conditions that I'd like to have in the conditional use permit. Because we're an operating ranch, we have both sheep and cattle on it. The, I'd like to have a page wire put over the, the four strand fence that is there now. The purpose of that, if the clients have any pets or dogs, they get interested in sheep sometimes, and it's not a, it's not a pleasant outcome for the sheep. There are also guard dogs that we have with the bands of sheep, and those dogs are known for taking on mountain lions, so somebody's pet would come out on the short end of the stick on that one. So that'd be the reason for the page wire fence is to keep the clients', you know, pets from coming over onto the ranch, particularly when there's livestock over there. No hiking on the ranch, no trespassing on the ranch at all, mainly because I don't want to see somebody get hurt or anything like that wandering out in an area or getting lost. I know Eric and I talked about having a, the type of septic system they were going to have would be one that they would have pumped on a, on a regular basis. The concern there is, the ranch is downslope from their, their project of what they're trying to do, and also downslope from there is a stock tank that collects the water. The biggest problem you have is with water purification, you can run it through two inches of sand, it'll be pure, except for viruses and heavy metals. And virus is something we're dealing with today. The animals that we raise are for human consumption, so we have, we're very, I guess, sensitive about what they drink, if you, if you know what I mean. So the, the concern would be the runoff if there is a major weather event. They have septic tanks or, or leach lines or something, you know, with leach lines and that sort of thing. Those tend not to handle floodwaters very well. So I was, I was glad to hear that they were going to put in these septics where they were going to be pumped on a fairly regular basis. And the other concern is because the, the, their clients will be entering the ranch as soon as they cross the railroad tracks on SP Road. They will be leaving the ranch when they get to, I think it's Buck Ridge Road to go into Junipine Estates. They pass through Junipine Estates and then to the campground. Currently, the county has no livestock signs out there, and we do have livestock, I mean, right now, this year, we have cattle in that area. We have had cattle hit, we've had sheep driven through, we've had all kinds of different issues with the traffic on that road. But when you have somebody coming from another country or from another state who's not familiar with the area, that can be confusing for them because they, you know, there's no big sign that says this is an operating ranch or anything like that out there that tells the visitors that the, they're, they're going into where there's active livestock management going on. The, the people that live out there on a regular basis know that it's an operating ranch, and there's not the issue so much. So, those are, those are the concerns that I have spoken with, with, as I said, with Eric. They've agreed to indemnify the ranch through their insurance, which I do appreciate, and the other things I just, like the page wire fence and no trespass on the ranch. And, and that the county can put up some signs on SP Road would be good.
Okay, Mr. McCauley, when you, you said that you have been in communication with the applicant. Do you feel that your concerns have been addressed in the conditions of this CUP?
The unfortunate thing, I'm on my phone at home and called in when he was, I have not seen the staff's report at all. I haven't been contacted by staff about this at all. You couldn't understand what he was saying because of the echo.
Okay.
Coming on my phone, so I wasn't really able, I tried to listen to him, but I wasn't really able to understand what he was saying.
Okay, okay, what I'm going to do, what I'm going to do, Mr. McCauley, is, Mr. Schwartz, I'd like to pick up the concerns brought about by Mr. McCauley, specifically the page wire fence, the no trespassing. And I don't know, is there anything the county can do with a working livestock to notify visitors into this area that they are entering into this type of an area?
Right, Sharon Taveros, as far as within county right of ways, like maybe on SP or something, that would be a conversation to have with our public works department, whether or not we, they would want to or be able to put up signage that alerts people that this is an active ranch. It might be as simple as in whatever brochures or website that the applicant uses, maybe they could have like a lookout for this kind of issue because it's an active ranch, that sort of thing, so that when people come that aren't from the area, they'll kind of know how to deal with things. I'm not sure what else in the conditional use permit process that we would do regarding that. I think that if the commission were wanting to, to have the applicant put some kind of signage on the property about don't trespass on the ranch, possibly that could be considered. Obviously, our signing, signage ordinance is looking to minimize the amount of signage that is around the county so that people are appreciating the beauty, and I don't know how that would affect the camping experience. And regarding the fence, any of the fencing that we do, we have lots, or that we require developers to do, we have a lot of comprehensive plan goals and policies that support doing fencing in a manner that's passable by wildlife, and so I don't know if that is, I don't know if that design is completely cohesive with what Mr. McCauley is looking to do, but possibly we could just put in, like in one of the other cases earlier in Perrin tonight, we could put in a condition about something like they have to modify fencing to be wildlife friendly and possibly, there's, and approved by the urban wildlife planner, and maybe there's a sort of design that, that meets both, allowing, you know, large elk or antelope or whatever sort of, sort of wildlife is in that area to pass, but not little dogs to terrorize the sheep. So maybe that could be an additional condition there, too.
Okay, I'm, I'm just kind of thinking out loud here, but it seems to me like all of the issues that Mr. McCauley brought up, and, and they're valid, I, I understand him on a working ranch, on, it would, it seems to me that if the visitors to this campground were knowledgeable and advised of what, of what they were coming into and, and really kind of the consequences for not obeying it, it almost seems like educate the visitors is the best way to go, because no one can lose their small pet. And if somehow we could get, we could educate on, Mr. Staub, could you please address this and give us your thoughts on this?
Absolutely, yeah, and so thanks for the opportunity to do so. So, I, I do want to say, you know, there are the things that we have to do in the report, and there's the things that we should do because it's the right thing to do, and I think Mike knows that that's always been our intentions in working with him, and whether the county provides signs or not, and I would, you know, I hope that we can work together to make that happen, we will make sure that there are signs that informs our guests that this is an operating ranch, you know, please operate with respect and care, and, and of course, that's all part of the experience. We are, in fact, in our policy within the camping guide, we're going to be very strict. There is a, you know, there's a no three-strike penalty, it's a one-strike and you're out of the campground. Some of those rules we can absolutely include, such as no pets allowed on premise. I don't think it's, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think it's so much the wildlife concern as it is, okay, it's the interaction of other dogs that our guests might bring with your cattle, wildlife, or worst-case scenario, your, your dogs.
The unfortunate thing is, we have had lots of run-ins with, with dogs in the area and whatnot. It's when, you know, an animal comes to a strange area and people bring their pets with them and whatnot, and I understand that, and I, I don't want to see somebody lose a, a pet because they've decided to go out and get curious about the, the band of sheep that's out there or something like that, because the Great Pyrenees we have, they've taken care of a few of them already, and I don't want to see that happen to anybody else's pet. There is a lease law in, in Kokino County, but I can tell you from experience, I haven't seen many people abide by that.
If I could chime in, my name's Eric Rubenstein, I'm business partners with Tom Staub. I'd like to first-
Yes, thank you for joining us, please state your address for the record.
It's 62012th Street in Huntington Beach, California. If I could first thank Mr. McCauley for meeting with me several times and addressing concerns that are valid. Some of those concerns have also been brought up by other neighbors. The, the one that seems to be one of the largest issues is guests or guest pet wandering on neighboring parcels. Some of the solutions that we have thought of, first, we, we own the parcels to the north and to the east to provide further buffer between other neighbors, but Perrin Ranch is definitely, definitely something that we need to take very seriously. We do not want our guests wandering on, on the ranch or on the parcels to the south. We're going to put systems in place to ensure that doesn't happen, and it's going to start before the guests are even allowed to make a reservation. And then we're also going to have rules set up in each tent. We're going to have an onsite camp host and manager enforce those rules. And I've talked with Mike, will an incident never happen? Will someone get curious and climb over the fence even though we will have posted signs stating no trespassing? That could happen, but I believe that our open communication and transparency and willing to work with the neighbors, we will be able to come up with, with a solution if that were to ever happen, but we will put systems in place to prevent that. I also want to reiterate that our campground is not necessarily a destination for these campgrounds. We really want to provide an alternative place to stay for people visiting the tourist landmarks like Grand Canyon, but we, we really like the idea of promoting something alternative to a traditional hotel, or even to something like under canvas, where we really want to promote privacy, we want to promote tranquility, cultivation, and connection with nature. I, I know that there was an issue with the airstreams, that they're not the same color as the environment, that is a very valid concern, but we're really hoping to have enough space between not only neighboring parcels, but each campsite, to where each campsite has its own private area, that we're hoping you can't even see the other campsites. The reason we chose airstreams are one, because they're, they're very popular among first-time campers, because they provide, they provide the camping experience while also providing certain amenities that they might be used to. And I've done this on a smaller scale, and the feedback I got from a lot of guests were that this might be their first time camping, you know, they come from cities, they're on a road trip, they might not have a tent, they don't know how to set up a tent, and they, a lot of them have had very profound experiences at, at the places I've, I've set up before because they've gotten to experience what, what is actually very powerful, looking up at the stars, being in the wilderness, you know, having that, that privacy and that tranquility in a natural setting that surprisingly a lot of people aren't used to.
Mr. Rubenstein, let me, let me ask you this. How are, how are people going to find you? How are they going to know to come and stay at your place?
So, we're going to set up on different marketing platforms, whether it's Verbo, Airbnb, Tom Staub is very good at marketing, we're going to have a website, so there'll be, there'll be different methods of marketing. If someone Googles Grand Canyon camping, we're hoping to come up close to the top of the search page, so there's different ways of marketing this to guests, but there's also very, several layers that the guests will have to go through in order to fully understand what we're trying to promote, so.
Okay, and, and going to the education, because really, I believe that the concerns that Mr. McCauley has brought up tonight can, almost every single one of them can be addressed through education, because like I said, no one wants to lose their pet, like no one wants to do that. And is it, is there a way that you could educate on all of your guests to, to the issues that Mr. McCauley brought up?
Absolutely, yes. Again, we'll, we'll do it before they can even make a reservation, it'll be in the tents. We plan on having an onsite full-time camp host to enforce these rules, and I've actually learned a significant amount about raising and agriculture from Mr. McCauley, and I think some of the guests would find some of that education interesting, but definitely from a level of safety and awareness that, that is a very real and dangerous thing.
Yeah, and I-
For them, so we don't-
And I'll tell you, Mr. McCauley knows what's going on. He's, you know, been doing this his whole life. Mr. McCauley, can I ask you, do you feel that the education of the guests is going to adequately address your concerns?
That's kind of a hard question to answer, because I have seen lots of people be get educated and, and turn right around and kind of forget it. I don't, I don't know how to, I don't know really how to answer that, because the, it's, it's interesting, because I deal with hunters every year, and I've asked game and fish for a number of years, every, you know, in July before hunting season starts in August is, if they're going to give them a literacy test, because they sometimes tend to turn off their mind when they drive out of the driveway and start heading out to, to hunting camp. I run into that issue every year, several times a year.
Okay, okay, on, we're going to bring this up when we have commission discussion, this will come up, on, so it'll, it'll, it'll get a talking through. Is there anything else, Mr. Rubenstein, that you wish to bring to the commission?
I just want to be, we really focus on transparency and open communication, and we wouldn't even go through with a project like this if there wasn't harmony among the neighbors. So, I want to make sure that I work directly with Mr. McCauley to, to resolve any of these issues, and if it's an issue that we can't resolve, then we're going to have to rethink this, but I do think that, you know, we will, we will comply with basically any, any solution he comes up with, we're willing to work on, whether it's solutions to, the reason why our, our wastewater design was somewhat ambiguous in, in our report is because we're, we're looking for a wastewater design that will ensure that there won't be any potential issues with wastewater going down into Cataract Canyon onto Mr. McCauley's property. So, I want, I, I have extended the invitation in the past, and I will continue to extend the invitation, that he is more than welcome to be as involved as he would like in this project in order to, in order to ensure its success.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Rubenstein, and I know I asked this question, Mr. Staub, but have you also read the staff report and agree with the conditions?
Is that question to Eric or to me?
Look, you had answered it, Mr. Staub, so I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Rubenstein has no issues with the staff report.
I have no issues with the staff report, no.
Okay, okay, thank you, and I, I will just state to, to the applicants that I also am a neighbor out there, and I very much appreciate your willingness to work. I'm not, I'm not adjacent to you, but I'm very active in this community, and I appreciate your willingness to work with the neighbors, because the neighbors in this, I know my neighbors and I know them well, they're going to speak up, so I, I think that you're getting ahead of it by working directly with them, I think that you've done a very good job. So, with that, I'm going to go ahead and close it, because I don't see anyone else from the public, I'm going to go ahead and close it now to the public and open it up for commission discussion, and Commissioner Burton, you're, you're up.
Um, I, I think it's a good project, and I think as long as they can work with the Perrin Ranch to mitigate the, the concerns they have, that I, I don't see any problem with this project.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Meyer?
I think two neighbors working in good faith, this, this is an excellent project, and I can certainly support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Best?
I agree, I mean, there's going to be a communication- I, I agree, I mean, uh, there's going to be a communication issue here, it won't be perfect, but, uh, it, it sounds to me like the applicant is, uh, working in good faith with the neighbors. Nobody wants their dog to be eaten by a sheep guard dog and if that is clearly explained and signed, uh, I think it'll take care of itself mostly, not that there will never be an incident.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best. Commissioner Ruggles?
I also can, uh, make the findings, uh, for this and I also understand one thing that, uh, Mr. McCauley, uh, told us about the, uh, Great Pyrenees, friends of mine in California have them and, uh, I'll tell you what, he's absolutely right when he says, uh, if, uh, someone's pet gets across that fence and counters them, that, I know who's going to win.
Mm-hmm.
I also, uh, think that, uh, we're off to an excellent start, uh, with, uh, communication, transparency and an ability to work together if there are problems. So that being said, I'm fully in favor of this.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Walters?
I can support this, it's pretty much all been said already. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Clifford?
I can support this, everybody's working together on it.
Yeah, okay, okay, and, um, for my comments, I can support this and I'm just going to reiterate before that I appreciate the applicant, um, reaching out and working harmoniously with the neighbors. And the reason I know, I know this area and the reason that I know that this harmonious, um, relationship is going to continue because the neighbors are going to have no problem, the residents out there are going to have no problem, they will not hesitate to speak up if there's a problem, so I can, I can just assure you that harmony, it's going to be har- harmony going forward, um, or, or it's, it's, it's just not, it, it won't be worth it to, um, to the applicant. So I truly believe that he is operating, that the applicants are operating, um, in good faith here. I believe that they're going to work with, um, Mr. McCauley and the other surrounding, uh, residents and I also can support this. I think, I think they've done a very good job, I think it's a, a beautiful project and I think it's going to, um, I think it's going to be great in that, in, in the area. I, I fully support it. So with that, I will accept a motion in a second, please.
Ma'am Chair, I make a motion that we approve CUP 20004 with the eight recommendations by staff.
I'll second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Clifford and a second by Commissioner, uh, by Commissioner Burton for approval of CUP 20-024. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Com- uh, Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
And Commissioner Taveras, aye. The, uh, CUP, uh, passes unanimously. So thank you very much, it looks like a great project. And the final item on the agenda tonight is call to the public, items not on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address the commission for items not on the agenda? And seeing none, we are going to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, thank you, good night, everybody, good job.
Good night, Commissioner.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.